Evening and welcome to the Litchfield Park Planning and Zoning Commission for August 9. Okay, can you hear me now? Okay, I'm hearing an echo. Can you hear me out there? No? Okay, we got a two-thirds vote for no. Okay, can you hear me now? Better? Okay. All right. For those of you in the back, if you can't hear us, there's a lot of seats up in the front. With that, let's call this meeting to order. Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, our first order of business is the item 3A City Center Zoning District Text Amendment. Mr. Sanks, can you give us a review of that?
Thank you Chair. And for everybody here, we're going to make do with our audiovisual setup, and so I'm going to present from my station here and then share my screen with a brief PowerPoint. So I know many of you are here for the next item on the agenda, but the first one is regarding the City Center zoning district. It's for the area kind of downtown known as Litchfield Square. And we're considering a text amendment to the zoning code to make some minor changes. So I'll go ahead and share my screen and then I will walk everybody through what those changes are. All right. So... Oh, there we go. Perfect. All right. So this is known as what's called the Citizen Review Session. It's a little bit like the neighborhood meeting that you attend for a zoning case, but since this is a citywide text amendment, we hold what's called Citizen Review with our Planning and Zoning Commission. This is the opportunity for the commission, members of the public, and city staff to discuss and share comments over the proposed text amendment. It's intended to come back to the Planning and Zoning Commission next month in September for a possible recommendation to the city council. I'm getting a message that those that are attending via Zoom can't hear me, so I'm going to see if I can turn on my mic on my actual computer, so give me one second, guys. Hopefully it doesn't cause a bunch of reverb. Okay, so I'm going to try it this way. All right, one second. So the City Center District Purpose, all of our zoning districts have a specific purpose in the code. And it promotes pedestrian-oriented commercial and civic core activities. These include ground-level retail shops, restaurants, government professional offices, and public parks and plazas. And we're looking at some, now that we've, we developed the district in 2019 and now that Litchfield Square is really being planned out, we've got our first lot was approved, is into the process of being approved by council for 40,000 square feet of development. We're looking at some potential conflicts in the district because of separate, required separation of land uses. And these are considerations of whether or not we should delete or consider modification of allowing religious institutions solely in the very center of the City Center or Litchfield Square project. With churches in the city center, you would have a difficulty in locating other types of uses. For example, a bar would need to be at least 300 feet away from a church. And so if you start trying to put both of those uses in a small proximity from one another, they start to kind of cancel each other out. So we're looking at modifying that. Same thing goes for schools of any type. They also need to be separated from other uses like a bar. We're looking at redefining smoke lounges because, you know, in the last 20 years, the idea of a smoke lounge has gone from what might be kind of a cigar bar to perhaps a hookah bar, perhaps the vape shops, any combination of those. And we also want to clarify that a smoke lounge does not include recreational or medical marijuana distribution, sales, cultivation, or growing. So our intention is to clean that up a little bit. And lastly, we are looking at a new tool that is designating the city center's own property as what's called an entertainment district. And if we do that, we don't have to worry about deleting or modifying schools or churches from the city center because an entertainment district relaxes the rules on separating bars from churches. They're allowed to be somewhat closer if it's in an entertainment district. And many of the cities in the valley have already done that. Phoenix, Glendale, and others have entertainment districts in their downtowns, so we don't have the concern of the separation. The definition of a smoke lounge would be changed as follows. We've done it in what's called legislative edit, so if you see something in a strikeout, that means it would be stricken from the definition. If you see something in bold, it would be added. So the smoke lounge would now be an establishment that is dedicated and whole or part into selling tobacco products and providing an area for the recreational smoking of tobacco products, including but not limited to cigar lounges and tobacco bars. We're intending to strike hookah lounges from the definition. And the reason on that is typically, in doing some research, we've seen the hours of operation for hookah lounges vary quite widely from those of a typical cigar bar. They typically open later in the evening rather than midday or early afternoon, and they extend to much later hours. We would also clarify that cannabis oil sales, like CBD as a primary use, vape shops, and recreational or medical marijuana sales for on- or off-premise consumption is not allowed. We're happy to entertain any comments from the public on this. It's a bit of a housekeeping item that we're doing, but it is on the agenda. So if you have any comments, obviously the commission is here to engage with the public on this. Have you had to answer questions?
Okay, now we're moving on to the continuation of the public hearing in item 3B. Many of you were here at the last meeting. Some of you perhaps were not. Part of why it was continued was because of the significant changes that were made just prior to the last meeting to make sure everybody had gotten sufficient notice. Mr. Sanks, I think many people have heard your presentation, but some may have not, may not have heard. So I think I'll go ahead and start with you, just as though we had not done it. If you can give the audience the overview, that would be good. Go ahead.
Thank you Chair, members of the commission, public. That's correct. On July 12th, we had the initial public hearing for the project known as the Thomas. That's the name of the prospective project that's just across the street behind us here at the Vestago Epicentro property. For those of you that don't know, the owner of the property, the church, is looking to sell the property. And the prospective developer is looking to change the zoning on the majority of the property to allow some limited commercial uses. And I'll go through another PowerPoint, but I'll try to go a little bit more quickly over what some of you have already seen. So let me go ahead and share my screen with you so we can all follow along together. All right, so here we are at the August 9th, 2022 public hearing. It's a continued, continuation of the hearing that started on July 12th. And for those of you that weren't able to attend the first one, I'll just kind of go through the meeting progress to date on the application. Some of you, maybe, many of you attended the May 17th neighborhood meeting. That was presented by the applicant. And the applicant's representative is here tonight to further present when the item comes up for discussion on his behalf. We had a study session on June 14th. At that time, staff presented the project to the commission that's here just as an information, for informational purposes only. It was a hearing discussion. And then, of course, on July 12th, we had the first public hearing that was over at Sowers Hall. And I'll thank everybody for your flexibility in joining us here tonight. Unfortunately, Sowers Hall was not available for the same night, so we had to scramble a bit to... And thank you to St. Peters for allowing us to be here tonight. So we're here tonight for a continuation of the July 12th public hearing. Just as a review, for those that may not have the property details, the Vestago Epicentro Phoenix property is directly east of us, which is behind my back. And that is a 3.6-acre property. It includes the Assembly Chapel Hall, about 10,000 square feet of offices and daycare, and then a small rectory building. It's bound by the Tier Verdi Lake Park and Townhomes on the north, single-family homes to the east, Indian School in the city of Goodyear to the south, and then ourselves here and the maintenance facility for the city on the other side of, on the west side of Litchfield Road. The request specifically is a change in land use on our general plan from public facility to commercial on the property. With the exception of the Church Assembly Hall, the Church Assembly Hall would remain public facility as proposed by the applicant. Further, the applicant seeking to rezone a portion of the property that would exist of the other buildings, not the church or assembly hall, but the smaller buildings, the 10,000 square foot office and the rectory building. The intention there would be to allow limited professional offices and some limited commercial uses. Basically, what they want to do is keep the church, keep the church's daycare, allow professional offices in the building to the east of the church, and allow the rectory building to perhaps convert into some sort of a café/restaurant. That's the vision that the applicant has presented as part of what they call an adaptive reuse of the facility. I just kind of gave you the recap of that in the slide here. I've gone into more detail of what adaptive reuse is, and we went into this detail last month. But again, they're wanting to repurpose the property to expand the uses allowed on-site. None of the buildings are proposed to be changed, except perhaps their exteriors and interiors remodeled, so they're not adding any additional floors to it. They won't remove any of the existing buildings. They would just, they would fill in kind of the spaces between the buildings with new landscaping and outdoor seating, presumably for people that would be at the café where they could sit outside and dine and read a book, or people using the offices. They would have a place to recreate outside amongst the café environment. The same would go for the church congregation. When the church congregation services are over, they could, they could filter out of the Assembly Hall and recreate in the center. The site plan is illustrative in color up here on the board. I know for those of you in the back, it looks quite small on the screen up there. The, this is a colorized version of what's existing, with the exception of the proposal to add about 4,000 square feet of possible additional office space on the site. That would go to, on the south side of the existing larger building. So if you look up on the screen, you're not going to really be able to see my mouse moving, I don't believe. I guess you can, kind of. It's this building over here in the northeast corner. Oh, thank you. Someone's got a better mouse than I do. That is the, that building there is existing, of course. It's one you can see if you just look outside. But the proposed future phase would be located just south of it or under it on the site plan, up against the existing parking lot. All of the buildings would remain single-story. And the project would seek to reuse the existing buildings again for professional office and limited retail and café uses. Their architect has done some conceptual renderings of how they would refresh the exterior of the project to make it somewhat more inviting for that kind of café, retail, office experience, as well as enhance the experience for the congregation that would be staying on-site. So we talked about this last month. There, when this was initially presented, the idea was that the church would no longer stay on-site. Our understanding is that the applicant has, would be entering into a five-year leaseback agreement. So if the church could sell the site, they could afford to stay on-site through a leaseback agreement for five years. Now, we know that that's a private agreement between the congregation and the property owner, and it's not something that would be guaranteed for five years, but that's the intent that was presented to us by the applicant. So the existing Vestago congregation is intended to stay on-site in the Assembly and Chapel Hall, and they'd also continue, this came up at the last meeting, I think I saw the gentleman here mention what would happen with the daycare, how would we have supporting services for the church. We didn't, I didn't know at the time, but my understanding is that lease agreement would include the space for the daycare, for the children, while their services are held there. Again, some additional follow-up. We talked about this already, the church would leaseback. And the pastor of the church, Roberto Romero, he's a senior pastor. He had sent out a letter just before the hearing asking for the neighborhood to support them in their endeavor to sell the church to the applicant, Mr. O'Connor, through Tri-West Realty, so that they could lease the property back and stay on-site, with their intent to stay for five years. I wanted to revisit some of the questions that came up last month, and that was, some, some members, not all, many of the neighbors already know this, but the property is not actually zoned residential. It's not also zoned just for a church. The church, of course, isn't allowed use. The property is zoned public facility. So I wanted to recap some of the development standards that are allowed in public facility, just as, for you to keep in the back of your mind. So in the event that this, perhaps this project was not successful, or if it did not get approved, and somebody else were to consider purchasing the property, you know, if it was a church, they maybe would just reuse the existing facility. If it wasn't a church and they wanted to do something different, the property does have some development rights that they could utilize. So as a recap, public facility has certain development rights that they can do without a rezoning. They can build up to three stories or 45 feet in height. There's setbacks along, both street furnages, or actually all three street furnages would be 20 feet. And then for the residences that are on the east, they would be required to set their buildings back at least 30 feet. And lot coverage, which means the amount of the lot you're allowed to cover could be up to 60%. Some of the uses that are currently allowed in the public facility that would not require rezoning, many of them would still require what's called a use permit, so it's a discretionary review by this commission, council, that would involve the public. Those include arcades, games, and centers, cemeteries, childcare centers, churches, of course, there's already a church there, health and medical clinics, commercial recreation, community facilities, continuum of care facilities, if you have at least 20 acres. In this case, that site's not 20 acres. Convention services, convalescent homes, that's kind of an older term. We would call that more so a skilled nursing facility, or maybe even a nursing home. And that would require a use permit. Farmer's markets are allowed, fraternal and civic clubs, like VFW or something like that could go there. Government facilities, of course, are allowed in public facility. Health clubs or gyms could go there, an information center. And you could actually propose offices, professional or business, with a use permit, plant nurseries, greenhouses, schools, solid waste stations, stables, and veterinary services like a vet clinic or hospital. Those are all allowed, but they would require a use permit. We were asked to prepare a map that kind of outlined the public's interest in regards to opposition and support. We had a little bit of help on the map, and we did pin everybody in opposition and everybody in support. You can see quite a lot of red pins on there for the opposition. There's approximately around 190 showing against it, 28 for it, a total of 218 residents. You can see the clustering of the pins. Many of those are from the two petitions, the two or three petitions that we received. So where you see a lot of the clustering was from the people that took the time to go door-to-door to engage with their neighbors and get signatures in opposition to the commercial rezoning. The pros, generally speaking, from those that were in support, is that they wanted to support small business. They wanted more local dining options. They encouraged or wanted adaptive reuse in their neighborhoods. Opportunity for tax revenue, and that we didn't have enough places for local arts and for civic events. For example, the Church Assembly Hall could be used for live production of plays or things like that, holiday sort of events. The cons are increased traffic, commercial activities in an area that's predominantly residential, and the concern of losing a church when we have just only four churches in the city. There's a concern that we would lose one of the churches with the commercial development. What's proposed here by the applicant is they're willing to limit all of the buildings on-site to one story, rather than two or three stories. It would stay one story, and that would be protected by the plan development overlay. Their interest is in protecting the church congregation and daycare as part of their religious facilities. They'd like to limit their uses to professional offices, retail on a small scale. There's not really that much square footage over there. And then, of course, the restaurant café, which has been proposed since it's been presented in the rectory building. They're looking to restrict uses that are currently allowed in commercial. They're asking to restrict a list of uses, including, since the last time we spoke, they are actually going to include a restriction to restrict bars, taverns, and cocktail lounges. Wanted to pay special attention to the Chair and the commission. There was some confusion as to what the role of what's called a plan development was in this case. The plan development tool means, even though they're asking for commercial, when they ask for a plan development, it becomes kind of a customized zoning district where you can restrict uses and impose, you can impose standards on the project to make it otherwise, if it would not otherwise be, the neighborhood would not otherwise accept it, that perhaps they could impose additional standards to the extent that it would make it something compatible with the neighborhood. So the applicant would be tied to the site plan and the exhibits provided. They would be subject to all of the use restrictions that we've listed. They would be subject to any prospective other restrictions that P&amp;Z, this commission might state, or that the council might state in September on the 21st when they see this, or if any of the neighbors were to bring up any additional restrictions. These restrictions could include, but aren't limited to, limiting commercial uses from specific portions of the site, consideration of limitations on hours of operation on perhaps some of those commercial uses, perhaps considering a limitation on what's proposed to be the future phase of the project. If there's a concern with the future phase, that can be also limited. Those are all the sorts of things that I think the commission and public should consider when evaluating the case. Again, as a reminder, the commission tonight would be making a recommendation on this item, whether it's for denial or for approval with conditions to the city council. They would be hearing this item, likely to be hearing this item on September 21st. The public meetings are scheduled out as follows. We had been considering introduction of this item until recently to the council on July 20th, but we did, we decided not to do that, but this is what we presented to you last month. And we do anticipate that this item will go forward on the September 21st council agenda. So that said, I'd happy to answer questions, and then I can toggle to different exhibits within the project if the public or the applicant needs me to.
In your summary, it seemed to contemplate possibly a limitation on the hours of operation. Is, can you comment on that?
In the respect of some of the concerns we heard from the neighbors with, from noise late night for, if there were restaurants or bars. Obviously, bars have now been stricken as a permitted use, so if perhaps a restaurant or other type of retail use were to be allowed, it is within the commission and the council's purview. If they wanted to set hours of operation restrictions in the plan development, they could do so. I think there was a concern, especially if anybody were to support it, that there would be late-night activity that would disturb the neighbors.
Okay, I didn't hear any requests, questions among the commission. At this point, I think I will take the citizen comments. But one thing I would like to do before we do that, there were a number of questions involving an electronic problem that we had at City Hall with the noticing. If one of you could address that, because many of the comments mentioned that, so rather than having to do it more than once, before we start, one of you would explain that as to what happened and what we did.
Thank you Chair, and I'm louder with this mic. I'm sorry, the question was to staff about how we noticed the project?
Yeah, there was a question, there was a problem with the electronics on posting the agenda. And a number of the people that want to speak raised that as an issue. So I thought we might as well address that right out of the gate.
Certainly. Thank you Chair. Yes, as I understand, at the city, the software system that's used to generate the agenda where we upload the staff report and the associated exhibits from the applicant and other necessary documents was functioning properly, so we had to go into manual mode. And it took us right up to the line to do that, since we normally use the system for the purpose of records-keeping. We apologize for those that were trying to access this. I wanted to also point out that staff, Daniel, and others in the city wanted to make sure that the word got out that the venue, us being here tonight, got noticed. They walked door-to-door and hand-delivered public notices to all of the residents within, I think, almost the entire notification range, just to make sure that you were all aware of the meeting tonight. Unfortunately, we don't currently have a venue large enough at City Hall to host meetings over of this size, and so we're kind of at the mercy of, unfortunately, the church is able to accommodate us here, whereas the other venues were not available, and we tried several. So beings that it got us down to the wire, we hand-delivered the notices rather than sending them through the mail. So we really do appreciate everyone understanding that. But in terms of the items tonight, I believe, you know, if anybody has any question whatsoever on the details of the project, I'd be happy to answer those, since there wasn't as much advance notice as we prefer, although we did meet the legal requirements.
Okay, thank you. Well, at this point, I'm going to take on the request to speak in the order that they were submitted, or at least pretty close to the order that they were submitted. So we, the first speaker requested is Shelley Smith. Shelley Smith here.
You do? Where do you want me to stand? Okay. Well, I would like to see you guys too. Is that all right? Okay, I'm gonna stand right here. Hello, commissioners and Litchfield Park residents. I'm happy to be here in support of the Thomas. My name is Shelley Smith, and I live near the church property. I don't know, some of you may know me and some of you don't, but I may know your children, because I've been working in the Litchfield School District for over 15 years. I teach a theater arts class that is looking always for opportunities to perform for their community. When I, when I heard about the church property being sold, I was concerned, and I reached out to Brian, and he put my mind to ease. I support the Thomas because it will be an asset to the community and our children. Okay, I want you to picture this, taking a walk around the lake, stopping in with your children, and having a coffee, having some ice cream, going to a cute boutique, and listening to some local musician, and maybe seeing a live production that our children will be in. I would think this would be an asset to our community and to our children, to get them outdoors and to meet our neighbors. Some of you may think that the city, the Litchfield City Center, has plans for such auditorium. Well, that plan is an outdoor amphitheater, which we already have at Rose Park. I don't know if you guys have seen it being used. I really haven't. An amphitheater is seasonal, and it can't be used during hot weather, and it's not suitable for young voices. The church property already has a perfect place with a wonderful stage and a sound system, and its indoor seating all year. stage and a sound system, and it's indoor seating all year round. And I was happy to know that the pastor is in support of the Thomas and the community use. We are lucky to have a resident of Litchfield Park that has the vision to bring more culture and arts to our community, who is supporting our kids and teenagers while preserving the heritage and keeping the beauty to Litchfield Park. Okay, now I'm gonna tell you about the couple that came to my front door. They wanted me to sign a petition, and they told me that they were gonna rip, they were gonna tear down the church, and they were gonna put a Pep Boys in it. I was quite surprised to hear this, and it's just simply not true. And just two days ago on social media, the same rumor was there. I think we need to ask ourselves what we want as a community, and I think the Thomas would be a wonderful asset for Litchfield Park that prides itself on a close-knit community. This property will change. If not now, it will change later. Why not have a place that will be great for our community and our children? I hope you share this vision. Thank you for listening to my thoughts on this project.
Thank you. Okay, our next, our next request to speak is from Robert Brender. Robert Brender, are you here? Oh, I'm sorry. I'm reading the email address. It's Pam Brenderman. Sorry about that. Go ahead.
I was looking at the traffic impact study that was submitted by the applicant, and I did the math, and was quite alarmed to realize that traffic will increase by 484% approximately with this development. It's already difficult enough to drive my car down Old Litchfield Road to get out of the park. My driveway is on Old Litchfield Road. Sometimes I have to sit in my driveway for five whole minutes before I can get out of my own driveway because the traffic is so bad. If we're gonna increase the traffic by approximately 484%, I'll never get out of my house. And with that much traffic going on, as we walk our children around the park and drop into the boutiques and the coffee shops or whatever, we're gonna be dodging 484% more cars. That's not good for the children. In addition, all that extra traffic is bad for the city's infrastructure. Our roads are not the best right now. You add all that additional traffic, and the roads are gonna go downhill even faster. In addition, it will not be as safe, it will be more dangerous for our children who are walking around the park because they're gonna be dodging all these cars, and the streets are gonna deteriorate. There's gonna be more car accidents, more, just more injuries, period. And I hope you will keep that in mind as in the forefront of your mind, because that is, it's gonna be just a dangerous, dangerous change to our community. It doesn't need to be.
Thank you very much. The next request to speak is from Brian, it looks like Dodridge. Mr. Dodridge here? Thank you.
Again, hi, my name's Brian. I'm here as a pastor and also representing Wellspring Church. We're a church about eight years old. We've been meeting for the last five years, the Archway Tribune Prep Campus just off board, about two miles from this location. I'd like to speak against the zoning. First, as someone who spent 26 years of my career wanting churches to thrive, I'm always going to be for churches continuing as churches, not be limited to the uses that this case Vestago would be moving forward. I want churches to succeed in the communities that they were set aside to succeed in. In the previous two public meetings to discuss the zoning, the phrase highest and best use of the property was used and discussed. And while I'm biased, I would say that I believe the highest and best use of this property is to be a church forever and always. While I've listened to and heard the proposed developer has reached agreement with Vestago to allow for the auditorium, I do not think that's best long-term. That has a limit to it, up to five years is their intent, without a guarantee of that, but up to five years. I cannot see into the future. I cannot predict what will happen before then or after then, but I do believe that remaining a church after that point, if not before, is aspirational. With the limited use of once a week and the current building that's used for children and youth going away into resurfaced properties, that just limits a church's activity. It will be limited to an auditorium once a week, as I understand it. I don't know all the details of their agreement. Last month, staff reported that Vestago had been in negotiations with another church for sell the property, and quote, "Those broke down." And that's accurate. That was with my church. Our church's offer was based on comps of church sales to church sales. That would be typical, but I think when it was considered to be commercial, another offer came in, probably with one we did not compete with as a church property. If this commission keeps the zoning as is, I think it's important for you to know that we'd want to re-enter negotiations with Vestago to remain this to be a church. We have a high desire for that church to become Wellspring Church. We can't guarantee that, but that's what we want to pick those conversations up, if Vestago, Episcentro, Pastor Roberto are open to that. And if so, we'll do the same thing. We'll allow for that same congregation to remain there. We'd already worked that out with them in advance, that we can work out a plan for them to remain a congregation on that property. We didn't even put a timetable on that, but that would still be discussions. But I believe if we had all the buildings that are currently there to be used, we could work through the logistics of that congregation and ours succeeding and if we're remaining church as is. Thank you for hearing me out.
Thank you. Our next request to speak is Carl Hartman. Mr. Hartman?
I'm gonna be so bold as to use the lectern up here, since I have some notes. There were three Planning and Zoning Commission meetings that were held in February and March of this year. The minutes of these meetings are as yet unpublished despite the fact that Arizona Open Meeting Law requires that minutes be published within three days of the meeting. My question is for Mr. Ledger, and that is, it only gets a simple question. It requires only a yes or no answer. Do you have any intention of ever publishing these minutes?
Mr. Hartman, I have no, no comment at this time for that. We are here today to talk about a specific, a specific zoning thing.
It's clear that the Planning and Zoning Commission has no desire to operate within the law then. It has been six months, six months since that February meeting, and minutes have not been published. That is unforgivable. You need to understand the quality of leadership that you're experiencing here with the city of Litchfield Park. It's just unforgivable, and I would like to ask that Mayor Schoeff and City Manager Williams look into this matter and get these minutes and the minutes of the city of Litchfield Park meetings, all published per the Arizona Open Meeting Law. My next question is for Mr. Sanks, and he just a moment ago said that he would take a few questions. And as you know, Mr. Sanks is the consultant to the city of Litchfield Park. Mr. Sanks, back in January of 2020, you were the head of a zoning code working group that focused exclusively on Section 28 of the city of Litchfield Park zoning code. In fact, you purportedly made not one, not two, but three technical reviews of that matrix, and that culminated in you publishing The Zoning Ordinance Rewrite and Zoning Matrix Update. For those of you unfamiliar with the zoning matrix, it defines what land uses can be used in a particular zoning code. What is a land use, you ask? Land uses are things like restaurant, bar, church, golf course, hotel. In other words, the kind of business that can take place on that land. Zoning codes are labels like residential, the zoning code that's assigned to your respective homes, or resort, which is the zoning code for the Wigwam, or open space, which is that, which is assigned to the golf courses at the Wigwam, and public facility, which is what Vestago is currently zoned. Now, the important thing to know about the zoning matrix is that only certain land uses are allowed in a particular zoning code. For example, a land use of bar is allowed in a zoning code of resort, but not allowed in residential. A land use of restaurant is allowed in the zoning code of resort, but not allowed in a public facility zoning. Think of the zoning code land use matrix as an Excel spreadsheet with 20 zoning code columns across the top and 88 land uses as rows. At present, the land use assigned to the Vestago property is church. However, with the proposed change, the use of this property, since it will no longer be a church, there has to be a new land use designation assigned to it. From all appearances, Mr. O'Connor is selecting auditorium as the land use to be, to replace church. The only problem is auditorium does not appear in the zoning matrix. Mr. Sanks, my question to you is, armed with your extensive knowledge of the zoning matrix, is auditorium a valid land use designation?
Thank you. Through the chair, I'll address the citizen. The question regards to the auditorium has caused a little bit of confusion. The reason the auditorium label was placed on that plan that you've seen in the application, that's a valid question. It's because in the parking matrix of the zoning code, the parking requirements for a building that's in the facility size like this, for example, is like an auditorium, and they have parking based on an auditorium. So, it's a little bit of a misnomer. It's still a church, but that's the reason why you see auditorium crisscrossed. And this is a plan development, so you could identify what the use and the purpose of the facility is. I think the intention in the narrative, and I think you've read the narrative from the applicant, was that they called it an auditorium, which would be a broader concept, that it would be a church, but also be open to civic events, kind of like a community theater. I think that's one reason why they use the term auditorium. But the applicant's representative is here tonight, and so if you'd like to ask further, he might be able to dig in a little bit for you. Is that okay? Right, it's related to parking.
Well, interestingly enough, there is no land use designation for a theater, as there is not one for auditorium. So, I'm still somewhat confused about this whole designation. It seems since Mr. O'Connor was involved in that rewrite back in 2020, he, along with Mr. Michael Faith, was the co-partner on that, they should both be well-versed in land uses, and it seems only appropriate that he would select one that would be within that matrix. But my third and final question is for Ms. Alvey, since in June, at the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, she showed so much interest in the traffic generated by the fire station across the street, which is actually a Public Works building. Ms. Alvey, I'm confused here. The traffic impact statement submitted with the Vestago application is for a three-building project consisting of 21,000 square feet in area, and it indicates the amount of traffic generated will be, by my calculation, six times greater than the existing traffic later, levels. That is, six times. Since a traffic impact statement for a four-building configuration of 26,000 square feet, as depicted on the site plan, was not submitted, we have no idea whether the traffic generated by that configuration would be 10 times or 12 times that which is generated by the church at present. But back to the application, I don't know if the applicant is really applying for a three-building project or a four-building project. I'm not sure what defines a project. The site plan or the traffic impact study? One would think that they should be consistent. Perhaps you'll be able to set me straight, but that's not my real question. My real question is, should the supporting information provided by the application actually be relevant to the project, or will any old information do?
Hi. I think that it's important to understand that when you're rezoning an area, when you're rezoning a property, you also have to look at the impact on the entire community, the entire surrounding area. The latest traffic evaluation did indicate that in the event that this were completely built out, meaning the additional building were placed on this property, it would increase, it would be an increase in traffic by over 400%, which, when you don't have a lot of traffic coming and going, if you have five cars driving by your house in, you know, an hour, increasing that to, you know, 20 to 30 cars may not seem like a lot, but it is when you are in a residential area and in a smaller community. Therefore, it's important to not just look at the property itself, but to look at the impact on the community as a whole. I don't think you can separate out a community because a community is part, the community is impacted by whatever happens to this building or that building or what have you. So, I don't think that you can isolate one specific building. I don't think you can isolate one specific thing. You have to look at the entire project as a whole to evaluate whether or not it will be a positive thing for the community or a negative thing for the community. I mean, there are, there are times that some things appears, though they will, you know, be great, but when you further explore it, you discover that it will have a very negative impact on the surrounding area, and I think that you need to take all of that into consideration. You can't just isolate one aspect.
Well, I appreciate your concern for the overview of the community itself, but we're asking the applicant here to submit a traffic impact statement that is consistent with the number of square feet that he's intending to build out. Apparently, according to the site plan, it's gonna be 26,000 square feet. His submitted traffic impact statement is for only 21,000, so it is understating significantly what the traffic impact would be. So, here we are, we're hanging all of these determinations on fallacious information. All I'm asking for is the applicant to submit a traffic impact statement which is consistent with the number of square feet he is proposing be built out in the four buildings on his projected site plan.
Thank you for your comments. At this point, we have a number of other people that want to speak, so we're going to move on. All right. The next person requesting to speak is Deborah Williams. Is Deborah Williams here?
Oh, my name is Deborah Williams, and I, we, my family brought me here in 1967. And so I am a long-term, been here 50 years, and, oh, okay. I have lived here since 1967. I've grown up here. I watched the lake be built, dug in. I've, it's, it's just, this is my home, and I love this town. And it's, we've gone through different changes. We, we lost, I mean, we, when everything started growing around us, the grocery store, we had a grocery store, we had a- We had a little cotton patch that you'd get class, our clothes from. We had, you know, the beauty shop and barber shop and all that. And it all changed, but it still kept in. We had restaurants come in and nice restaurants and everything. And I've raised my children here. I met my husband here, and we've lived all through this time. I just believe that it would be, I would like to have all the, everything, the new buildings and everything on that side of the city, and let this side be the residential side. And where you can feel comfortable. I walk my dog every day. And I fed the ducks and all that kind of stuff. And just keep it small and not a lot of traffic. My husband, when he comes home from work, he comes home, and a lot of times, he can't get turned left over here because there's so much traffic. So that's all I have to say. I just would like to see it, everything on that side.
Thank you.
Chair, I just wanted to let you know there's one member with their hand up to speak via Zoom. I'm not sure if you see it on your side. But once maybe we get through that. And also, at some point, the applicant is also here to present. Sorry, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Our next speaker is Ruth Cox. Ruth Cox here.
Ruth, you can stay. I'll come to you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Sangs. My name is Ruth Cox, and I want to say good evening to you, Mr. Chairman, and to the commission. And I especially want to say thank you. I want to say thank you for taking the time to review and study and consider and listen, and all without compensation. And you give your expertise and your professionalism to the city every month, and it's overwhelming. You bring, you brought forth a general plan to present to council, and council may have tweaked it a little bit, but they accepted it, put it before the voters last week, and 85% of voters approved the jungle plan. I have the figures that were available last night at 6:30. The yeses were, my glasses. 1,426 yes, 248 no. So you know what your constituents think about our general plan. And it's unbelievable, inconceivable that a week later, we're voting on amending it already. I have nothing more to say. You'll do what you think best and will perfect.
Thank you. Okay, our next request to speak is from Woody Thomas.
Thank you, commission, or chairman and commissioners. And again, I'd like to echo Ruth's comments on your time and service. And I'd also like to share a little bit of my qualifications. I know I spoke with you before, but I'm a certified general real estate appraiser with over 40 years' experience. I served on this commission for six years. And I also had the pleasure and honor assigning the plat for the village of Litchfield Park when I was mayor. And so I understand the value of somebody coming to the table with money to get a development moving forward, and it's important to the community. But with that, I'll give you a brief recap from what I said before, and that's that our city was well-designed by Mike Carzanas, the Gruen Associates, Understanding, Columbia, Maryland, and Reston, Virginia. I'm very familiar with, and they have very, been very successful. Unfortunately, Litchfield Park has limped along in the process. But we still have a rather unique community that we all like. And with that, it radiates out from a commercial center downtown to the residential, and that's where the community facility zoning, which we see out here, is part of it. And I think that's where I'm in favor of that current zoning, regardless of the potential uses. I can't imagine a crematorium being permitted in this place. But anyway, but, and then I'd also like to say that the, again, the election that we just had reaffirmed that general plan. And in that general plan, that's what we've laid out, is how this community is put together. The traffic is a big concern. I would like to thank Brian O'Connor for pointing out the location of the support and opposition. I think that's well worthwhile. Thank you.
Thank you, Woody. Our next request to speak is Marcy Ellis.
I think I'll get up here too. Nice to see you all. My name is Marcy Ellis. I've also lived here 55 years since 1966. Raised my children here. Helped get Litchfield Park Incorporated. Served on city council twice. And my husband chaired planning and zoning. And I still love this city. I am excited about the possibility of a community center and theater complex in Litchfield Park. I know there's some pushback in the community. People don't want to see any change. But something is going to happen on that lot, and it's going to be sold. I hope people aren't here, hoping they can stop this so they can buy it themselves for a little less. We're lucky to have a man who lives in Litchfield Park and wants to see this property become part of the community. It could be an outside company who could care less about what happens on that lot. And I challenge you to think of some of the things that could happen. But instead, we have someone who lives here, has a family, and wants to see it become a family-oriented complex. This same man has even agreed to make it available to the church that has had services there for the past several years. I think that's great. His vision for a community center completes a full community that Litchfield is planning. We have a historical center and a great one on the north. That doesn't compete with the city center, it augments it. We have the city center in the middle, which is being planned, which will be wonderful. Worry about traffic? That's going to bring traffic. And a community center on the south end, that makes kind of a trilogy. Some say it will compete. Good heavens. Goodyear and Avondale have been competing with us for years. Put grocery stores and drugstores on our borders. You know, business has a wonderful way of making competition, makes things better, finding uses. A theater isn't free. They need business around it to help fund the theater complex. It complements what the city is planning, and I know from experience that building a theater is expensive. And if you haven't been in that building, you should. It's a perfect theater. We need it. The whole West Valley needs a place like that where community bands, orchestras, theater groups, movies, children's dance groups, children's orchestras can perform. A theater in the middle of shops that help pay for it would be a draw. And those who worry about traffic, when the Catholic Church was there, and by the way, it's only a mile away. It's not like people can't get there. There was so much traffic, you couldn't park anywhere near that area. So it is not going to make it worse. There is excellent ingress and egress that won't go through neighborhoods that's bordered on one side by Indian School Road, on another by Litchfield Road, and another by the lake in Bea Nueva. I can't think of a better borders that keep it traffic mostly out of neighborhoods. It will bring business into Litchfield, and the arts are definitely economic development. It will set us apart and ahead of other communities who haven't been able to do this. Theater and all the arts open us up to experiencing different perspectives that we may not be aware of or have contemplated. Theater's way of examining dialogue, monologue, and character allow us to flex our empathy muscles, if we have empathy. In other words, understanding each other. Theater, dance, music, and all the arts help us understand what it means to be human. The role of drama and other arts range from instructive, education, informative, entertaining, therapeutic, social, and cultural to religious and political experiences. It enables us to learn about ourselves, our society, and about life in general. It exposes life's actions and experiences through performances, music, and dance on the stage. We should be so lucky. Thanks to a wonderful man, a member of our community, we have a fantastic opportunity to have something in Litchfield Park that no other community has. Please, please, don't let us lose this opportunity. Thank you.
Our next request to speak is from Peter Mahoney.
Good evening, commissioners and chairman. Thank you for allowing me to speak today. My name's Peter Mahoney. I grew up in this town. My father was actually the person who selected the land for that church, and he was the head of the building committee for that church. I was an altar boy in the previous church, but I will say that I was married in that church. My father's funeral was in that church. My mom attended master every morning. She still does at the new church in Avondale. And I opened my first restaurant downtown Litchfield Park 20 years ago. And when I started building that first restaurant, I got a call from the city manager when I was putting up the outside fence. And people were furious that I was taking their downtown and doing what I wanted to do with it. They told them, actually, I could have built the fence all the way to the curb because the property was owned all the way to the curb. Because people are afraid of change, and I get that. Sometimes it's tough. But I also want to point out something that if the Catholic Church wanted to build that church today, people would be fighting it because they're afraid of traffic. And I think people have forgotten how much traffic was at that church. Holy Days of Obligation. Sunday morning, four masses, Saturday night mass, weddings, funerals, private events, fish fries on Friday night during Easter time. So we had to look back and think about what it was, but we also had to move forward as well. I believe a rising tide lifts all boats. Yes, they're going to put a restaurant in there. I have no interest in it myself. But I told Mr. O'Connor that I think it's probably a good thing, because if we expand more, it's going to help everybody. It brings more people to our community, which they get recognized that this is a vibrant, beautiful town. It raises property values overall. And I think you have to think about this. And I wasn't going to get involved, but a resident called me probably six or eight weeks ago and said, people are coming door to door. And this person wanted to know about my belief. And I said, I'm not a councilman anymore. And they didn't realize that. And the concern is, the people that are going door to door were not being honest about what Mr. O'Connor was trying to achieve. They also told me that they were told that they were going to tear down the church, and they were going to probably put in a Pep Boys. And I'm like, that's not possible. But this is what was said. So when you look on that map of all the people that were negative, I wonder how many people got the false information. And when I was on the council, this happened quite often. You go to meetings, and people would come up and speak, and you're like, they can't be serious. That's not what's happening. So you have to sit there and listen and judge and try to educate people on what's really going to happen. Yeah, there's fear of traffic. There was fear of traffic in downtown Litchfield when I opened the first restaurant, and I get that. But overall, I think this is going to be a benefit to our community. We need more things for arts. And I can tell you also, on a weekly basis, still to this day, I get phone calls. Can we have a space, do you have a space? We can have a meeting for 25 or 30 people with lunch? And I always have to say, no, we don't have that. I can put you in the breezeway at Old Pueblo, but we don't have a space for this. And there's a great demand and need for office space where people can actually have meetings, real estate. It's mostly real estate people that call because they want to have meetings for their clients. I just think we have to get over the fear of change sometimes. It's happening in the downtown center. If anybody should be concerned, it should be me. But I also believe a rising tide lifts all boats. And I have to think we need to rethink all this. But I do believe, if this was today, that Catholic Church never would have been built because of fear of change. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, our next, our next speaker is Michael Thompson.
Thank you, Planning and Zoning Commission. My name is Michael Thompson. I am a business owner in Litchfield Park for the past 11 years. More recent resident, remodeling the house, renting another while that's being done. I fully support the Thomas Project. And most of my points that I was going to make have been made by the last two speakers and our first speaker tonight. The West Valley is kind of a cultural desert within a desert. We need something like this. The previous meetings that I've attended about this project, the main points were loss of a church and the traffic. And the church is now back on the table. It's not going away, and there's the traffic issue, so. Traffic's going to come. Traffic's going to come more with the city center. It's going to come through all parts of Litchfield Park, not just on Old Litchfield Road, but through Bird Lane, through the east end of Wigwam. People's traffic apps are going to take them wherever the quickest route is, so. But not to go over everything that's already been in set in favor of this project, I fully support it. And I've known Brian for a long time, and he has our community's best interest. So thank you all.
Thank you. The next speaker request is from, looks like Cameron Schaft, Schaftner? Did I pronounce that correctly?
You can use the podium, or you can...
I'm going to stand over there because I'm a very nervous speaker. So don't, don't fault me for that. Okay, so I was at the last meeting as well, and I spoke to everyone. And I've grown up in the West Valley. My family's grown up in the West Valley. I'm a fourth-generation West Valley resident. I'm a fourth-generation West Valley resident. I own a business here in Litchfield Park. I have a lot of clients who live in Litchfield Park, a lot of friends, a lot of family. I'm in support of the rezoning for several reasons. As a lifelong West Valley resident, I've seen the community grow immensely. I can understand why people are wary of change. It brings uncertainty and makes us all adapt to its purpose. With that being said, I think we all need to see beyond the discomfort of change and realize that in relation to this space, change is most likely inevitable. Obviously, no one wants to see this community altered for the worse. And I think we are all speaking with the intention to keep this from happening. Whether this space converts to another church, an alternate public facility use, as mentioned by the board, or into something perhaps no one has envisioned yet, like what the developer is proposing, we have been told by the board that this space is not able to sustain in its current state. I personally find comfort and pride that a local member of this community has taken it upon themselves to envision a space that could bring a benefit to everyone who lives in the immediate community as well as the surrounding communities of the West Valley. I personally wouldn't want this area to be developed by someone who didn't live in the community and wouldn't be impacted every day by the change that is made. Litchfield Park, like many of the smaller towns in the West Valley, has a very tight-knit community. And as the city builds up around us, we don't want to lose that. Believe me, I know I'm young, maybe younger than a lot of the people speaking tonight, but I have a family growing here too. And my family is going to be here for a very long time. My children are going to be here. They're going to grow up here. And I want them to grow up in a town that was very similar to what I grew up in. To me, that's very important. But I also want resources for them that I didn't have. The opportunities and services this new space will provide this community may be different than how it is currently functioning, but it will definitely be just as positively impactful with the possibility of positively impacting more people than it could as a public use structure. Growth isn't a bad thing when it's thoughtfully done. And I think if people can look beyond their fear of change, they will see that this adaptive use is intended to be just that. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. The next request to speak is from Barbara Linsgold. Barbara Linsgold, would you come up? Thank you.
I'm Barbara Linsgold. I feel like a newbie here, although I bought my property in 2001. I brought it because I loved the quietness, the peacefulness, and the ability to walk to mass every morning. I live on Paladin Circle, South Paladin Circle. And when I bought this house, I was just thrilled to be able to walk to church. And when I was closed out my law practice in DC, I came here with joy, only to find out that the Catholic Church was no longer able to stay and sustain itself on this piece of property. And so they moved, and they bought a piece of property across the highway. Yes, I still go there. I go there daily, and I love it. But they do not impinge upon the property or the residential values. Or, like happens to me, every time there's a parade, they're lined up on my street. They're coming down my street. They're parked in front of my house. They're parked in front of my driveway. Now, is that selfish? Yes. But at 90 years of age, I feel I'm entitled to be a little bit selfish. And when I moved here, and one of the summers that I couldn't come down because I was closing out my law practice in DC, my sister came and used my driveway to walk up to the church because of all of the traffic. And you say that the traffic isn't important? It is going to impact me immensely because every time, anytime it happens, it cannot but increase and impinge upon the traffic around the area. And that is why I am here feeling embarrassed listening to Peter and other people speak about their businesses and so on. But I think it is important that the quality of life that exists in Litchfield Park and that my granddaughter, who's visiting me for this summer, finds just absolutely thrilling, be able to continue.
The next request to speak is from Whitney Woods.
And Whitney, if you're able to speak from like right here. I understand the Zoom attendees can hear the speakers better because my mic picks up.
Hi, everyone. I'm Whitney Yates Woods, and I've lived in Litchfield Park since I was one month old. And anyway, I'm a little nervous as well. I don't, this is very outside of my comfort zone. But something I think is really cool about this meeting is that everybody in this room cares so much about Litchfield Park. And that is what I love about Litchfield Park, and it's very unique to us. I am in favor of this project. And I'll be honest, at first, I was not. So I was told that there was going to be nail salon and a subway in this area. And I think rumors just fly when change is occurring. And I picked up the phone, and I called Brian O'Connor, and I said, what is this? How did you get this? Why are you putting a subway? Why are you doing a nail salon? And he said, are you kidding me? That's not at all what I want. I don't want it to be just like another strip center. I want it to be a unique, special thing that we can bring the community together and have multiple office buildings, have a church space, have a restaurant. And he said, have you heard of Lucy's at the Orchard? And I have. I love that place. It's in Phoenix, and it has like a little splash pad for children. I go there with my kids. You can get iced tea. You can hang out with your friends. Gone to baby showers there. Gone to wedding showers there. And I think something like that is really needed on this side of town. And I had suggested it in one of the online forums, and someone wrote back, why don't you move to Phoenix? And that's not what I want. I want my family that I'm raising in Litchfield Park. I am a resident. I have a two-year-old and a five-year-old to be able to have these things here so they don't have to drive to Phoenix. I think it's really cool. We have an awesome community, and I think it's going to bring the community together more than anything. You know, I grew up in the Catholic Church, and I grew up as an altar server there. I watched my parents renew their vows there. I was actually really sad when it moved and became big. And I was in high school, and it's different now. I used to know every family that went to that church. And we had donuts and coffee afterwards. Now I go to church, and I don't really know a lot of people. And you know, that's just the nature of change, and it happens. And our community has grown. But what hasn't changed is how much everybody here cares. So I think as long as we continue to have respectful conversations with each other like this, good things will happen. But I think that Brian lives here. He loves the community. His children are young and growing up in this community, and he has our best interest in mind, and I really trust that. So with that said, I am in favor of the Thomas, and I hope that these conversations will continue to develop, and people will get on board. Thank you.
Thank you. At this point in time, we have three requests to speak that I'm seeing from on Zoom. So we're going to do those three, and then I'm going to give the applicant's representative an opportunity to counter, and then we'll move on.
And Chair, I believe we have one more member here that would like to speak in person, but Carol, who's attending via Zoom, is asked to speak next, specifically if possible. Is that all right?
Yeah, that's fine. Let's do Carol.
Okay, one moment. I'm going to see if I can make this work as we make our way through the process. Carol, can you speak into the mic? Go ahead and try it again. Trying to find the speaker on my laptop.
Can you hear me now?
Can you hear her now? Not yet?
All right, Carol, let's try it again.
Can you hear me now?
All right, let's try it.
Okay. Thank you for allowing me to speak. I wanted to follow the particular last speaker, specifically in regards to living in Litchfield Park for the rest of her life. Unlike her, I am a Phoenix native resident, and my family has moved to Litchfield Park in order to escape the ever-overwhelming doom that is happening in the city of Phoenix with redevelopment plan. I happen to be one of the persons that actually fought against the FAA fight-out change back in 2014. So I do have a little bit of policy experience, and I do also understand the young people's views on getting new development into their community while as also preserving what the elderly persons living in our community also want. I am in the middle generation, if you will. And one thing I wanted to bring up was, once this is enacted, there will be no way back. Speaking from experience in living downtown historic Phoenix, I can tell you that once something is changed, it is very difficult to go back. I am sure that the site plan person who is looking at purchasing this property has a very good intent. But from my personal experience and actually living in an area that has mixed-use redevelopment properties, it is not uncommon for that developer to hold the property, then to turn around a year later and sell it, which then will change also its use. I want to make this fundamentally clear. It is a very scary slippery slope once you start looking at redevelopment issues. I'm sure that the young people that have all their children want to have all of these amazing amenities for their kids, and I totally 100% get it. But what I don't get is how you would look at this site plan and say, specifically regarding the people that surround the lake, and not only that, but live in that area, that it would not impact them, and it would be a benefit. I would disagree with that. I think a better use for that property, instead of fear mongering of who's going to own it when, or if it's going to change or not change, because that's what you're doing is you're fear mongering, is I want to say specifically, why don't we look at maybe the city purchasing that plot? And maybe the city has taken a hold of that plot in order to provide, I don't know, a community center like you all were speaking about that would impact not only the children in the community, but also provide services to our elderly community as well. Let's face it, guys, we're all aging here, and we want the best things for our family. But that specific area, and especially around the lake, these are people that are of aging population for the most part and having, you know, hooting and hollering and kids running amok. They're already sandwiched by the school, so they have to deal with that. And, you know, we have to deal with sporting events from the school and that alike. And we all knew that moving here and living here. However, changing that actual overlay will definitely impact not just the elderly people, but also I wanted to bring up how it's going to impact the actual lake itself and who's actually coming and going to the lake. Now, I appreciate everybody who walks their dogs and everyone who feeds the ducks. But nobody's even asked the ducks how they feel about it. And on a regular basis, if you live over on this side, you would understand that we have to stop regularly for the ducks to cross the road. And that is also going to put our wildlife in danger. So I have an issue with that as well. So I know that's just kind of a funny anecdote, but I just wanted to put that out there as well. We moved here to Litchfield Park because we loved the community that it is. We love the fact that people could coexist regardless of what age they were and that there was a respect on both sides of the fence, regardless of what their religion was or their age. I hope that you take that into consideration and think about how many people have actually increased your property values by moving to your area specifically because of what it offers. We have young people in this room, in this auditorium right now, that are making statements saying that it will only enhance, and it will only bring up our property values in order to sell it. I'm here to tell you, as a Phoenix native who had nothing but homeless crime and everything moved into her neighborhood and over the top of her. If you want Lucy's, go to Lucy's. The rest of us that are over here, we don't want that. We want to keep the peace and quiet that is Litchfield Park because that's what makes it special. It's the fact that everybody is respected and their words are heard. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Going through the requests to speak, I apparently skipped two people. So I want to finish those two, and then we have a couple of people on Zoom that want to talk. And then, once we've done that, I'm going to ask for the developer's representative to speak. And then I'm going to ask for a motion to close the public hearing at that point, and then we'll go into consultation among the board members. So at this point, I'm going to add, is Renato Alvarez here?
And good evening, Commissioners. Good evening all. As you heard, my name is Renato Alvarez. I live like about a block and a half away from the property that we are talking about it. And let me speak on behalf of all those people who believe in Christ. I am not support the rezoning at all. And let me tell you why. First of all, I would like to honor the founders of this city, the pioneers, those people that decided to build walls around this city for a reason. And for a reason, they decide to have four different churches. And I would like to honor those people. And I would like to honor because if we resumed one of the churches, that's going to be a huge precedent. Which one will be the next? It will be Litchfield Park Community Church? It will be the Mormon Church? Or probably it will be this one? So let's go to talk about the founders of this city. Talking about business, we don't really need business in this city. If you go north, we got a lot of business. If you go west, we got a business. If we go east, we got a business. If we go south, we got a business. So whatever you see, you will see business. So we have more than enough business around us. Don't you? It's common sense. Common sense. We don't need more business. We got plenty of business in this city. Plenty. Not in this city, around this city. And this community, in this part of the West Valley, is still growing and growing, right? So talking about the general plan that I vote in favor, they're talking about that we are more than 100,000 people in Litchfield Park because we are a more cities. We are more people. So let's say that what we have to offer those people, that we have art, we have business, we have, name it. But what about Christ? What about Christ? What about a church? Are we ready to make a big loss in a church and wait for the next one, and the next one, and the next one? Because we are making a big, a huge precedent? Because we are making a big, a huge precedent? The last person that I would like to honor is Christ. Jesus. The Lord. For a reason, we got four churches in this tiny city. For a divine reason, we got four churches. Let's forget about the traffic. Let's forget about the business. Let's forget, let's, where is Jesus in all this? Where is Christ in all this? What we, what we have to offer to every single people in this community? Talking about children, talking about women's, talking about men's, talking about family, what we have to offer as a church people? And I've heard clearly that this is a business matter, right? This is money matter. Let's, let's go and be clear, this is a business matter. Jesus and the gospel is not very important for the people who are, who are supporting this place or this, uh, rezoning. And let me finish with this. Remember that I told you that I'm going to speak on behalf and honor the founders of this city, but also the founder of the church, Christ. And let me finish with this. Because it's clear that most of the people that speak in favor are business people. And I believe that probably they are church people also. Believers, that's fine. No one can serve two matters, two masters. No one. Either you will hate the one and love the other, or you will be devoted to the one and despise the other. You cannot serve both. God and money. That's what Jesus said. Thank you.
Okay, the final request to speak from the audience present here before we get to the Zoom calls is Norm Johnson?
I've never been on this side of the Oliver. Thank you.
First of all, Mr. Chairman and ladies and gentlemen of the Planning Commission, I want to thank you for the job that you do. I spent nearly 40 years in government, municipal government, and also in the State House of Representatives in Olympia, Washington. So I'm rather a newbie here in this area, but I'm a member of this parish of St. Peters. And you are doing a job that all people should thank you for doing. You don't get a large paycheck monthly, I'm sure. And, uh, the recommendations you're going to have to make, you know, some of the people are going to be with you and some of the people are going to be against you. I think my concerns are things that, that I think you can deal with and the City Council of Litchfield Park can deal with. One thing is police. You contract your police. And as I watch the news every evening, so many of the crimes that are committed seem to be more toward the big city of Phoenix, but a lot of them occur in strip malls and in malls. So that is a concern of mine as police. Number two, here on the grounds of St. Peters, we have a school. So that concerns me because there are children and anytime there are children involved, we have to be very, very cautious. You people know that, you probably have been parents or grandparents. I know I have a son who lives just, uh, I don't know my directions on that. Well, the west and, uh, of, and a little bit north of Millennium High School. In fact, I had two grandchildren attend Millennium High School. That, so I am concerned about schoolchildren, I'm concerned about police, and I'm concerned about what kind of businesses will be in a strip mall. Having been where you are and where you're going, I have seen developers say, well, we're going to do this and this and this. But if you do vote on their behalf, be sure it's ironclad. Because I've seen too many times where they say, we're going to have this and all of a sudden it doesn't materialize. And you have to have an ironclad agreement so you can say, we're sorry, you're out of here. You're not a part of this. The other thing, I have a old cousin even older than me call up and say, tell me about this town, Litchfield Park where Cameron lives. And I said, well, you know, I think I like to call it kind of the Scottsdale of the west without all the junk shops. And you have a beautiful community. Keep it that way. So whatever your decision is and whatever you give to the City Council, be sure it's ironclad, whether you're pro or you're anti. Thank you, and again, thank you for the service that you committed yourselves to without those great big paychecks. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. At this time, I'm, looks like we have two requests to speak on Zoom. The first one I will call is Rachel Dudley.
Chair, we're going to, um, do the Zoom speakers if we can again through Commissioner Alby's computer since that was the clearest. And so, uh...
Rachel, do you want to start talking? We can test the sound.
Rachel, you're ready?
Yeah, okay. Can you hear me? Is everybody? You able to hear now? Okay, great. Thank you. Okay, so my name is Rachel Dudley. Um, I'm a resident of Litchfield Park and also a business owner. Um, so, so many people have said a lot of, uh, great things, um, you know, tonight. So I, I'm going to try to make this brief because I know everybody's probably like getting eyes glazed over at this point, but, um, basically, I guess, you know, I support the, the rezoning and I just want to, um, I just want to kind of focus the commissioners, if I can, on what is really an issue here, which I think is, is, the question is, how can this property be, uh, how can it best serve our community? I think that's kind of at the root of a lot of comments people are making and there's disagreement on what that, that is. But to me, a rezoning, um, in particular, the way that this rezoning package has been presented, where it retains, uh, the community facility in, in one property, in one part of the property, um, is actually kind of give us the best flexibility for the, for the future. So, yeah, everybody kind of has in their head this picture of what the future will look like and some people, to some people it's scary, to some people it's amazing. Obviously, it's actually true, this is going to be somewhere in between. There's going to be, you know, things that people don't, no one likes and things that people love. And so we just have to figure out how we're going to grow and kind of create this vibrant community that we all have in our hearts and in our heads. And I think that the, that rezoning this property absolutely speaks to that because it gives the city and planners and leadership the most amount of flexibility moving forward to, to really have this property serve our community in a way that it has not been able to before. So, um, that's, those are my thoughts. Thank you for your time and also thank you for your service. I definitely echo those thoughts and you guys are in a really tough spot, so thank you.
Uh, yes, Chair, I believe, um, it's noted as TMA title, but I'm not sure if that's their name or if that's just their Zoom profile.
Hello? Am I on?
Who's speaking?
Hello?
Who's speaking?
Um, Rob Conway. Can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, great. Um, so, my name's Rob Conway. I am a business owner here in Litchfield Park for the last, uh, nine years or so. I'm a real estate broker. I'm actually a competitor of Brian O'Connor in the business world, uh, but I actually have a personal relationship going back to, um, the mid 2000s, I'd say 2005 or '06 or so with, with, uh, Mr. O'Connor. But I, I would say from my per, I've been here, I've been a resident for six, seven years. And, um, I've dealt with Brian on a personal level, a professional level, and then in a, uh, co-op level on some projects. And, um, the one thing that I keep coming back to with this rez, rez, rezoning, you guys hear me? All right?
Yes, we can hear you.
You hear me?
We can.
Okay. Um, the one thing that I keep coming back to as, as a resident and also just, uh, knowing, knowing the, um, the person behind this project and what his intentions are, and is, is just that if, if we're going to do a project in Litchfield Park and we're going to, um, you know, eventually this, this property will be turned into something. So what is that something? Let's take control of that something. Let's have something that we're very clear and we, we know the objectives of everything that's going into it. And, um, that's, that's kind of my stance on it is that we're going to know exactly what we're getting into. It's, um, you know, the project, we're all very clear, it's been laid out, it's, 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 there's no funny business here, it's all laid out in transparency, that this is a local developer trying to create a project that is great for his community as opposed to a wild card that we have no idea about. And I don't consider that fear mongering as one of the opponents suggested. I consider that a reality, that we don't know what can come in. You know, we can have any kind of corporate entity come in and, 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 um, turn it into something that we have no control over, so to speak, at some point. And so, um, you know, I understand the adversity and the objection of a particular group and probably mostly locally, uh, you know, residents located near the, the property and the, and the subject, but, um, as far as, in my experience as a, as a, in real estate, that this, this development project is about as clean and as community friendly as you can get, that you would want, as opposed to the unknown in the wild card. And, um, you know, I, I, I can't speak enough about, you know, we, we can never, we can't predict the future, we don't know what's going to happen, but I can at least speak to the vision and the character of the person behind this. And it is for all of Litchfield Park and the community, you know, there's no bigger proponent of Litchfield Park than, than Brian and, and that's just the God's honest truth. And, um, you know, the project will be done right, it will be done with the community first because of, you know, he lives in the community, he wants to see it thrive and he believes in it. And, um, to me, that gives, if I'm going to make a decision over, uh, one hand, uh, you know, two, two in, two in the hand and one in the bush, I'm going to go for it, you know, because that is what we're, we're faced with. We don't know. And, and I, I don't want to make it like fearful, but this is a good project, it's a community project. And, um, you know, we're growing as a community, we have to do things like these to, to adapt and, and if we can control it with our own community, it's, it's for the best of everyone, I think. So that's my, uh, two cents or 10 cents.
Thank you. At this point, I think we will move on and let the applicant's representative counter. Thank you, by the way, for all of you that are still, that are still here and hanging in, so.
And thank you, Chair. Someone left a Tesla card at the sign-in sheet. In case you tried to leave, we have it. Thanks. Not sure who owns the Tesla, but I have your card.
Thank you, Commissioners. Uh, if you're like me, this has been a long day already and I'll try to be brief with everyone here. Everybody's been very passionate, uh, and Brian, uh, the developer, has offered many, many compromises so far. And your professional experiences, you've seen people who are unwilling to budge and Brian has shown the fortitude of, of offerings and compromises and listening to the public. Uh, first occurred at the first public meeting, uh, the, the compromises that have occurred now since the, the initial presentation to the commission. And we'd like to also offer that some other points we want to make out is, um, the, the project will, um, the, the site's going to change. It will not be a church. It has proven over time that a church is not a viable use of the space, otherwise we wouldn't be here today. The other fact to point out is the buildings are going to remain, there's no demolishment. Uh, the church is going to be made into whatever terminology you want to call it, whether it's an auditorium, a theater, a church, a public worship place, a community gathering place, all of those things are synonymous. The 12,000 square foot, uh, facility is a fraction of the overall square footage of the site. Uh, the only site that, part of the building that's being modified is the 7,500 square foot, um, church offices right now that are being proposed to be neighborhood commercial to offer, uh, professional services, uh, realtors, um, title agencies, things like that. Uh, it's not a nail salon, it's not a subway, it's not a hookah bar, it's not a tattoo parlor. In fact, Brian, in part of his compromises, have offered to limit those commercial uses specifically as part of the approval process. Again, further emphasizing that he's willing to make compromises as well. Uh, by keeping the church facility, he's preserving the community and the heritage of the site, so we're not, um, destroying any of that, that urban fabric that's out there today. As Commissioners, you know, it is already zoned as a public facility. Uh, as was presented earlier by Mr. Sanks, this could be a three-story tall facility as it is today without any opposition, regardless of opinions. What Brian is offering is a compromise mid-ground, uh, as the last speaker had mentioned, uh, take the double you know, not the one you don't. Traffic has been, um, a challenging, um, issue with a lot of the people. And what I put onto the commission is how much traffic is being augmented by current traffic patterns with the new development for the city center. Nobody's talked about that increase of volumes along Old Witchfield Road. The other thing people haven't mentioned with the traffic is that the direction of travel on Villanueva is not into the residence, it's 900 feet or less from the intersection going west. So any of the traffic's going to be outbound, not inbound. The proximity to Indian School Road also limits the ability of increased traffic. Here, you're talking about a very small corridor of increased volumes, people going into this as a destination. One of the other things, uh, to point out is, as a church, it's not producing tax revenue for the community. As the transition occurs with rental taxes and ice cream tax or whatever else that goes in there as a sales unit, that's going to out, further augment to improve your roadways, improve your other destinations, fortify your parks. These improvements are for the positive of the community. And again, everybody's been very positive about their opinions and we'll leave it to the council, to, uh, Commissioners here to, um, render a decision on that. And I'll take any questions at the moment.
Many of the, yes, Mr. Vane?
After you remove the uses that the applicant has agreed to remove, what's left? I, I can't find a list anywhere of what is actually then allowed to be, allowed uses.
The uses intended are to be more professional services?
Yeah, I, I understand the intended uses. What are the allowed uses? Do, do we have a copy of the zoning code, or could somebody address that?
Through the Chair, Commissioner Faith. Section 28 of the city zoning code is the land use matrix, and the allowed uses for neighborhood commercial would be permitted subject to the use restrictions proposed. I can go to the use list. The applicant was tasked in the very beginning, prior to formal application, with identifying what many might conceive of as the most obnoxious of the uses, if you will. Neighborhood is already the lightest commercial zone that we have. And then they peeled back the auto-related uses and the other ones that are already in the list. I can bring up the slide that notates them. Give me one second. I'm trying to kind of reconcile what's still allowed versus what's in the restricted uses. Give me one second. I'll flip through the slides and screen share. Okay, one second. All right. And so from this use list, the only one that we would add to this that isn't currently on this slide, this was from last month, but they just added as a further restricted use would be the bar tavern or cocktail lounge. So any of the auto-related uses are out. The convenience stores are out. Equipment rentals out. Hookah bars out. All of these are out. And then when you come back to the full scale of what use lists are left, I would have to go to the actual zoning ordinance. Give me one second. And it might take me a moment to read it, but let me see what I can do. Apologize for the delay. It just takes a moment to load all these up. I can see if I can actually screen share the code with you if you'd like. I don't have a summary matrix prepared for what's left exactly, but we can go to it. Give me one second. All right. So neighborhood commercial, you have a variety of uses that would be allowed subject to a use permit. Those would include clinics, commercial recreation, and cleaners, dry cleaners. Those would still require a use permit. They're not allowed by right. You would allow community facilities, which are also allowed already in PF. If you don't mind working with me here, going as fast as I can through this. You could still do a farmer's market with a use permit. You could do financial institutions, like a bank. That would be allowed by right. You could do a fraternal or a civic club, subject to a use permit, but that's already allowed by right in PF, so it's actually adding a restriction to the zoning district. By going to commercial, it's making it more restrictive in that respect. Neighborhood commercial would allow. We already talked about mortuaries. You would need a use permit in commercial to allow that. I don't think we're gonna have any mortuaries. Government facilities would be permitted, just as they already are in public facility. All right. Additional uses that would be allowed in neighborhood commercial, you could do a health club. So currently in public facility, you would need a use permit, but to go to commercial, it would be allowed by right if somebody wanted a small gym. A hookah bar would require a use permit. It would not be allowed just by right. Service industries, industry services would be allowed by, I'm sorry, I apologize. An information center would be allowed. Those are also allowed in public facilities, so there's no change. The same goes for if you needed a manufactured structure. That's basically meaning if you need a temporary trailer, like we've got in a couple locations, you could do that with a use permit. It's not really a use, but rather a temporary use. As you can see, the uses are quite limited. You could do a mini warehouse, subject to a use permit, but the applicant has proposed to strike that, so that one is not going to be allowed. That would be like a self-storage facility for the people that are here. That might not be familiar with the term mini warehouse. Other permitted uses. So instead of needing a use permit in public facility, neighborhood commercial would allow the professional offices by right. It would also allow a dentist or medical office by right. That's separate from a clinic or like a hospital. But a, like a dentist office would be allowed by right. He's already stricken off-track betting, so that one is one of the uses that would not be allowed because of the planned development overlay. Research and development. A research and development firm or an office would be allowed subject to a use permit. Those are very limited. We don't see very many of those. A restaurant would be permitted. That would be a new use. A hardware store would be allowed, but that would be subject to a use permit. Retail's permitted. Schools would actually be subject to a use permit now, rather than allowed by right in public facility. So that would become more restrictive to locate a school on the site. Supermarkets were already stricken. They're shown as subject to a use permit in the code, but the applicant has chosen to restrict that outright and not allow a supermarket on the site. The, um, there's a short list of temporary uses in the code that are subject to a use permit, like sidewalk sales and things like that. Those are allowed. No vehicle, although in the code, you would see vehicle uses would be allowed subject to a use permit. The applicant has chosen to strike that and prohibit them from the site, so those would not be allowed. Veterinary services, domestic hospital or clinic. There would be no change. Those would be required to obtain a use permit, just like they are in public facility. So what you see across the board is the allowed uses that really change are the ability to have retail, restaurant, dentist office, and a professional office.
Any other, any other questions of the applicant or staff? Yes?
Based, excuse me, based on the limitations that are being placed on this property, it, it would appear as though you could have like a few offices, basically. The current home for the pastor would be turned into a restaurant. I don't think it would be viable to consider what would happen if you, if you built it out and put the other building on this property. Would, would it even be financially viable for the developer to do this? I mean, it just, it seems as though there's a lot of limitations that are being placed on this. And I'm, I'm just not sure it would even work from a financial standpoint.
That risk is up to Mr. O'Connor and his development. So he's currently proposing recycling the three adaptive reuses, the term he's using, the existing three structures, with the planned overlay, so that we don't have to repeat this process in five years, 10 years, who knows how long. He's offering to show the footprint of a future building when his success does grow. So he has parking capacity for all four structures, the one included in the future. But it's a, use the three you have now, maximize their opportunity, and see what the community offers in terms of participation, you know, is there patronage to come and use these facilities? Are they successful? Will they grow? Will they want more of the same? And so he's offering the fourth structure as that expandability to his site. So the risk is all his in terms of, is this the best use for the facility? Because currently, a church is not the best use.
Okay. Any other, any other questions for the applicant representative or staff? Okay, it looks, it looks like none. At this point, would someone make a motion to close the public hearing, so we can go into deliberation by the Commission?
All move to close the public hearing.
We have, Mr. Faith moved to close the public hearing. It was seconded by Ms. Olby. All those in favor of closing the public hearing at this times, wait a second.
Chair, I apologize for the interruption, but before you make a motion to close the public hearing, I believe the pastor of Lasago was wishing to speak. I'm not certain if he's on Zoom or not. I just received a message, instant message. Let me take a look. I have Zoom on like three different locations here. I believe, oh, the pastor wishes to speak. He didn't realize he needed to sign up, but he, he's here in person. If you don't, would you allow him to approach the podium?
Yeah. Yeah, you can go ahead and make a few comments. Keep in mind that we've all been here for over two hours. At some point, we have to close and go home, so.
Thank you. I just wanna read something that I wrote in the letter that I sent to the city. During the pandemic, the leadership at Basta Wepi Centro reached the decision that I will, that it will better serve our ministry to sell our property. For some months during 2021, we were in negotiations with another church as potential buyers, but unfortunately that negotiation failed. At the end of 2021, we reached out to Brian O'Connor and expressed to him our desire to sell, sell our building and wanted to see if he could work with us in order to, to sell the building. Shortly after that meeting, Brian O'Connor came back to us with a potential offer that we considered appropriate and accepted it. Apart from the actual offer, one of the offer points that was attractive to our congregation was the possibility to lease back spaces of the property to continue having our services at the current location. Also, the whole project had elements focused on the community, something that we appreciated. When we were informed that the plan was for parts of the property to remain public use, we were glad and assured once more that their plans were with the community in mind. A couple of weeks ago, we have agreed with the buyer on the terms for Episcentro, the church, to stay, to enter into a lease agreement for the following five years. This is a great, this is great for our congregation, since it will allow us to continue our ministry without moving out from our location. We are excited about our partnership with Brian O'Connor and think the community and the church will be benefited with this project. With respect, with respect, the input of the community, both the ones that support and the ones that oppose the project, but think that the city should consider only those based on real information and not lies and misinformation. Something that has been mentioned before, people knocking on doors and saying, spreading misinformation about the project. As members of the community, we also want the best for it, and I will respect the decision of the city. It is our understanding there have been some offensive comments against the buyer, but I wanted to say that in all our negotiations and dealings with the buyer, Brian O'Connor, with the sellers have been treated with respect and integrity, something that we cannot say about some other parties that were interested in the property. For all those that are opposing the project because of the idea that the committee is losing a church, let me reaffirm that Basta Wepi Centro is staying one, is staying on the premises for the next five years. And if after the five years Episcentro leaves, another church will have the opportunity to lease the space, since it will continue to be public use and perfect for church services. We appreciate your consideration to grant the buyer their zoning request. We will be using around 11,000 square footage for, for our church, but that's bigger than most churches. So there will be enough space for us to have our services. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, and at this time, we had a motion and a second to close the public hearing. All those in favor of closing the public hearings, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? None. We will now move into the next item, which is deliberation on these, on these issues. Does any Commission member have any comments they would like to, to make before we go to the deliberations? Yes?
Uh, there, my name is Andrew Fraser. There was some confusion. I am not Brian O'Connor. It's all right. I am going to vote in favor of this project to go to City Council for consideration. I think through the process, Brian has made what I consider good faith efforts to hear the community, adapt the project, adjust it so that the church can stay. The traffic is obviously a big concern of a lot of you, and I fully understand it. What I will say to you is, with all due respect to the professional engineer who stamped it, I think that traffic study is bad, and you should do another one. The reason being is, I can tell you how those traffic studies are built. They're built with an ITE manual, and how they get those numbers is someone like me, when I was a grad student, sits in a parking lot and counts cars. That's how you get trips per hour, trips per peak time period. This is a unique project. It's not a fast casual restaurant that is in some strip mall. I think that was in, the numbers came from Wisconsin, Washington. This is, this is unique. These trips are gonna be golf carts. They're gonna be bicycles. They're gonna be walking. This is not strictly automobiles. That study today says that there's 162 trips per day to this facility. There's not. I mean, there, there might be 10, 20 on an average weekday. There, there really is not a lot of activity at this church. So I think that when, if the rest of the committee, you know, approves us to go to City Council, I think that the community deserves a better traffic study, something that is specific to what Litchfield Park is as a community, how we, you know, how we as a community use our space. You know, I am also a dad of three young kids, seven, five, and three. I think that what Brian is trying to do is a benefit overall to the community. I do recognize that there is a lot of pushback from the neighbors that live in this area, and I respect that. And I hope that if this goes to City Council, you go to them and you let them know. My opinion on this matter is that I think that it deserves at least to go that far.
Any other, any other comments? Okay, well, I'll make, I'll make a few comments. First of all, thank you all for, for coming. This body only recommends, and that is not a cop-out, but that is our job to recommend. I have been, I have struggled with this decision because I look, you know, and the map was very helpful, but not surprisingly, people that are the closest to something new happening are generally the ones that are most opposed. People living on the other side of Litchfield, if they're in favor of it, it's not that they have bad intentions. It's just that it does not impact them directly, and that's the way it is. My wife and I arrived here, I had been, you know, practicing law in the area for about 15 years prior to all of that, but we got here in 1998, so we're relative newcomers. We live, if you look at a map of the city center, in the top left-hand corner where it says other residential, that is my wife and I. We live at the back end of Luchana Drive, and it looks very much like someday we will get to look at, you know, a parking structure up in that top corner, possibly. When we moved in, we watched across the way as the open land over there went away and revisions to golf course and more houses, and I had And I had warned my wife when we moved in, don't get too attached to all of that because things change. We saw Scout Park, which was ringed by trees that actually probably shouldn't have been there because they were high water use. The previous owner of the Wigwam, while they were going into bankruptcy and negotiating, decided they weren't going to spend money to water that park anymore because it was their private property, but it killed all the trees. So then we watched the changes. So now we have a very nice park that is open for kids, kids to play in. So we've seen all these changes, you know, there was a time when there was a grocery store in downtown Litchfield. That went away. Not long after we moved in, the drugstore moved away, and it's all been replaced by, you know, other businesses, most of which are owned by Mr. Mahoney. So we have to tip our hat to his business, Akuman. But I can remember, if you look at what we have now, what it was like in 2007 and eight. Our little downtown was almost a ghost town, you know, other than Mr., you know, Mahoney. So all these changes have come and gone, and I look at, I understand that people are afraid of the changes, but the reality, when the city center comes on board, all of us are going to have to deal with extra traffic. You know, my neighborhood, we're definitely going to be seeing it. So we're concerned. So we watched all this change come and go. There's nobody on this commission that gets paid. I don't think we even get mileage or anything. So we don't get anything. So it, it gives us the privilege of coming out and meeting with our neighbors. And if you want to talk about democracy in action, at the lowest level of government is where you see democracy, where people have direct access. So I appreciate all of you coming out. But at the end of the day, it is, to me, it is not about how many churches we have in Litchfield Park any more than it would be about how many real estate offices do we have? You know, or how many barber shops do, do we have? And I realize that people, there's a very different feel about churches. I get that, I really do. But that's not really the issue. The issue is there's a land use that's, that is on this particular piece of property. The developer of that property, in conjunction with the current owners, has made an amazing amount of things that he is willing to agree to at this point in time. So to my way of thinking, looking at all of those things that he was willing to do puts an umbrella of protection over this particular project because something's going to go in there at some point in time. And there are allowed uses that don't require this kind of a meeting and don't require a lot of other things that I don't think anybody's going to want on that property. And the next, if this doesn't go through, the next developer may not care about any of those things. They may just say, okay, what can I, what can we build without having to go through all that? And there's a number of onerous things on, on the list that they would be able to do that. So after a lot of struggling and looking, you know, and looking at the issues on this, and there's still more to, there's still more to be done. Because the one last thing I'll say is one of the misconceptions that I've noticed over the last 15 or 20 years of being around these kind of meetings, the public often comes to the meeting with the assumption that the city council or the planning and zoning, that everything is in the bag and they're going to just approve this. Not so. We're here to hear these applications. The applicants are entitled by law and at the Arizona Constitution to have a fair hearing, and that's what all of us try to do. But after looking at everything that there was, I came to the conclusion, if I lived over by the lake, I would not be happy about this change. But, but again, if we were, and it's good to look back when the Catholic Church was going full steam over there, what was happening. There was a lot of traffic. It wasn't as obvious probably because there wasn't any other traffic, you know, going on, but there was. And as the city center comes on board, there will be traffic coming up from Indian School. They're going to be, it will be coming in off of Wigwam and off the new, you know, the new entrances. And it's just something that, that has to be dealt with. So having said all of that, I came to the conclusion that because of what the changes the developer offered, that I would have to support this project. And I suggested at the last meeting that we have another meeting and we go through all this again to make sure that everybody out there had a, had a full opportunity to come in and speak if they wanted, and anybody that had changed their mind would have that same option. So when we get to the vote, I plan to vote in favor of the project. Are there any, any other?
I'd just like to echo what my fellow commissioners have said without repeating it. I'm also for, for this. The, the remaining uses, none of them worry me. It, it looks like it's going to be limited down to office, retail, restaurant. I think that increases the vibrance of this community, and like I said, I'll, I'll be voting for it.
Initially, when I heard about this project, I, I had heard a lot of the rumors as well. And then I met with Brian and, and the pastor of the church, and I was excited about it. However, since that time, since we've had a number of studies that have come in with regard to traffic, and also just the limitations put on that property at this point with regard to what it can become, I'm not really sure that it's even worth it to do anything. And regardless of how many people are for it and how many people are against it, it appears as though there's about 200 people who are opposing this versus around 30 that are in favor of it. My greatest concern, however, relates to the traffic study. And I don't know if it's a good traffic study or not, but when you have a traffic study that is going to increase the number of vehicles that are going by, like 450% from what it is now, I think that's concerning. The area around the city center has been dirt, and anybody who has driven past there or bought any properties around there in the last five, 10, 15, 20 years should have been aware of the fact that at some point that dirt was going to be something and it would be developed. This particular property has been a church for years. People see the church and it already is developed. They don't believe that it's going to change into something else. I don't necessarily think that this is the best position to, to go in with this particular property. It is going to become something else at some point in time. I don't know what it's going to become. I doubt that it will ever be sold to another church. So I am going to be voting against this particular proposal. However, I'm doing so because I, I don't believe that it's a viable, a viable, viable proposal. And once again, I mean, it's not really up to us. It will end up going to the city council. The city council, they are the ones who are going to ultimately decide what is going to happen to this property. But I feel I need to let you know as residents of the city, where I'm coming from and my position on this. Thank you.
I've been involved in a lot of public meetings over the years and real estate projects and, and all, and I am just so grateful that so many people have turned out and that they've written to the city and made their opinions known. And you may not be able to sway the decision for or against, but you're going to make it better, whatever the end result is. You're going to make it better because you came here and you wrote and you gave your opinions. And so whatever ends up being developed on that site over the next several years is going to be better because you showed up, and I'm just very grateful for that. Thank you.
Bob, did you want to say anything? Bob Dare. Bob, was that a yes? Go ahead.
To add any more words, other than if you want to make, I'd be willing to make a motion at this time.
Yeah, let's go ahead, go ahead and make your motion.
Bob, will you make a motion?
All right. I'd make a motion that we take the proposal for the general plan amendment application, GPA 2201. Give it an affirmative vote from this committee and send it on to the city council for approval.
Is there, is there a second? We have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor of approving GPA 22-01, minor general plan amendment with a recommendation to the council. Say yes and raise your hand as well, please. Yes? And any opposed? We have, okay, so we have two opposed and four in favor. So the minor, minor general plan amendment is approved, recommendation four to two. We now come up on RZ 22-01 rezoning with a planned development overlay. Is there a motion for that? Bob Dare, again?
So, uh, application number RZ 22-01, that we also approve this and send it to the city council to approve for the rezoning request.
Is there a second?
Chair.
We have a second from Mr. Fraser.
Chair, if I may, in, in your packet, there are a series of conditions associated with the zoning case. If you wish to include those, if you can include those in the motion, they're also restated in the summary request provided by the applicant.
Yeah, I'm going to amend the motion to include the language as set forth in the summary.
Is there a second on the amended motion? We have, we have a second from Mr. Fraser. All those in favor of the amended motion for the rezoning with the PD overlay along with the staff suggestions, say aye. Aye. All those opposed, say nay. Passes four to two. Now, at this point, our agenda says the next item is a, is a staff report. Do we have a staff report?
And chair and commissioners, I'll keep it brief. I know it's been a long night. Just a couple of updates. I know you can't comment back since it's just a direct report to you, but we have received the rezoning application for JDM's 15 acres. It includes a request for a couple hundred multifamily units at the northwest corner of Litchfield Road and Wigwam Boulevard. We've also received a request for an 80-foot tall wireless communication facility in the form of a fake tree for Monument Point. That's just been received in the last few days. And we are now receiving our first application for a recreational medical, recreational marijuana facility in Monument Point. The only lot in the city that it could possibly go. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so now, let's see here. Had the staff report. I skipped over the commissioner's report on current events. Do any of the commissioners have any, any comments? Hearing none. The chair will make one comment. I know we had a number of, there were several months a while back that we didn't meet because there wasn't anything going on. But if at our next meeting, if we could get caught up on minutes and get the minute, minute approvals done, that would be appreciated.
Thank you, chair. Yes, Mr. Williams and Mr. Lofters are both aware that they'll get us caught up.
Okay, with that, is there a motion to adjourn? Motion to adjourn. Is there a second? Second from Mr. Fraser. All those in favor of adjourning, say aye. Aye. Unanimous to adjourn. Thank you all for coming.